Um, roll call, please.
Susan Walkie.
President.
Kip Ward.
Here.
Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Chester Norikas.
President.
And Wes Ryan.
Here.
When I walked by, there weren't any sign-ups on the public comment. Still nothing? Thank you. There are no meeting minutes. And the next item is Special Order of Business Presentations, Project Selection for 2017 Bond. Allison Robertson.
I'm going to do the intro and then let her do all the heavy lifting. So if you recall, this is carrying forward from our meeting two weeks ago. You have in your packet a staff report from Allison, plus a list of all of the different projects. The idea for tonight's meeting, the goal, is actually to eliminate projects, or keep them all in if you desire. This is all in preparation for the 2017 bond issuance, which will be the last issuance associated with this urban renewal agency district. And in order to be considered for the bonds, they have to be in an approved list of possible projects. The dollar amounts, of course, far exceed the almost $3 million that you'll have available. Tonight, it's not the intent or the purpose of tonight's meeting to actually select a project. It's really more if there is some projects you do not want to consider to be used than it's to pull projects from this list, which ultimately means you can leave them all in and then, at the time the bond is issued, then the urban renewal agency can make a decision based on all of the projects. So Allison, I'll turn the time over to you with that.
Good evening. So this is a very long list, and so I just wanted to walk through a few things on the list, just to kind of help with wayfinding through it. If you'll look at the top, you can see there's a subcategory column. And so there are three subcategories. One is budgeted and underway. And two is recently discussed. And when we say recently discussed, we're referring to the February 8th workshop that you all had to discuss capital planning. And the third subcategory is the 1988 Plan projects. And so these are basically whatever is left in the 1988 Plan that we have not yet done. So those are, that's kind of how the list is categorized. And so those 1988 Plan projects, those are projects that we haven't really talked about, but legally you can do them. And again, I've mentioned this before, when we did our 1988 Plan, which is here, and good for 2:00 AM reading material, the plan was really envisioned to be pretty ambitious, because it's always better to run out of money than it is to run out of projects and then try to figure out how to spend that money, which we still have to do, but at least we know these are the bounds of what we can spend money on. So speaking of projects, as an example, if you turn to page seven in the project list, you will see, kind of halfway down the page, there's a project that says "Undergrounding Existing Pole-Mounted Utility Systems." And that one, if you'll look over, the description says "Wakoma on Highway 101 from North 35th Street South, plus or minus 950 feet." So that's a very specific description of a project that's listed in the 1988 Plan. If you'll look at the next item, it's the same.
Allison, this is actually at the bottom of page six.
Oh.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
From my prenup.
Yeah, mine too. I was looking all over for it.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I don't have the same copy you do exactly. So anyway, so the next item is the same, the same project name, but the description is for Nelscott on Highway 101 from South 32nd Street South, plus or minus 100 feet. So that one also is a very specific description for the same project name that is in the 1988 Plan. And if you'll look one project down, it's again, the same project name, "Undergrounding", but the description is very general. It says "In such other locations along U.S. 101 as agency funds will allow." So I just wanted to point out that the 1988 Plan has some very specific projects, and then it has some very general guidelines of what sort of thing you can do and where. Lastly, on the first page, you will also see the D-Lake Utility Undergrounding, also kind of on the same topic. And that one is called out separately, because that is a project that we had done some work on before we finished the design for that project. And we have it budgeted and underway when you are looking at kind of that last three- to five-year planning. So it's in our queue. We've talked about it. We're moving in that direction. But it's called out as a separate project, because that is one that we had been moving forward. So in terms of undergrounding, there are four listings for that topic. Lastly, I wanted to, let's see. Oh, actually, I've gone through all my notes on that. So do you have any questions about the list, or any particular projects, that I can help provide a little more information on?
Madam Chair. What is the downside of just including this list as it is? Because something that we are currently working on may not work out, and then we would have those funds available for one of those to be determined. So I guess my question is, is there a downside to just even being inclusive in keeping it all in?
I can't think of one. I'm not part of the bond team. They just asked us for a list of projects that you may be considering. So if this is it, and that's what you would decide to do, then we would go back to them with that list.
The only downside is if there is a project you absolutely do not want to do. You just can't stand the thought of doing that, and you leave it in. It could be done. Does that make sense?
Yes. Mr. Ward actually wanted to speak.
No, that's right. Go ahead.
Oh, well, Madam Chair. I guess where I'm coming from is I was in on that 1988 whole thing.
Yes.
And these were the projects that we all felt should be done eventually. Now, maybe it'll never get done under urban renewal, but we were hopeful that someday they would be accomplished. And some of these probably could be done through Parks Development. Some of them could be done with grant money. And some of them we're going to actually have to pay for, and probably pay a lot of money that we don't really want to pay. But I just, I know what we were thinking then, and that we were trying to figure out ways to beautify the city from one end to the other through whatever mechanisms we could utilize. And the projects that we came up with over this course of time, and citizens groups and whatever, were projects that we all felt very passionately about. So I'm not particularly interested in eliminating anything out of the list. I mean, that's not to say it's going to happen, but I would rather have it in the list that it may happen. I, I'm done.
Mr. Ward?
Oh, well, one of the, I thought we had covered before and had gone through it is the Salacy project. And I see it's still there, creating $3,215,000 for it. So that's a high expense item. Yeah, that's, I'm just kind of curious why we keep seeing that.
Yeah, so that one actually should be previously discussed. For, so there are four listings on the first page for Salacy Lift Station. There's design and engineering and construction. And then for the Forest Main, there's design and engineering and construction. And those four categories should actually be previously discussed, so I apologize for that. I was working off of a different Excel spreadsheet, and we had it budgeted, and then through conversation had changed that number to zero, because it was not going to be included. So yes, you're right, that's available to do, but we don't have it budgeted in this current year budget.
The next one down is also in that category of the D-Lake Utility Undergrounding. That has not been budgeted.
Where are we? I'm sorry.
First page.
Page one.
One, two, three, four, five, six, one down.
Okay.
The D-Lake Utility Undergrounding, that has been discussed, but there haven't been any decisions that have been made on that one either.
Right, for the construction. Same thing for the Cutler Baywalk, which is the next one down, and the jetty realignment construction. So while we are in design on those projects, and we assumed that they would be going forward, technically, we are not in construction contract with anyone on those. And so for the construction portion of those projects, they are previously discussed, but not currently underway.
Madam Chair.
Chester Norikas.
Again, on page one with the Salacy projects, Allison. Under all four of them, it says "underway." Construction is not underway, is it?
No. For all of those, basically on page one, from the second project down for Salacy Lift Station, going all the way down through the Cutler Jetty Realignment Construction, all of those subcategories should be previously discussed, because we are not currently doing any work for those.
So I can cross out the word "underway"?
Yes. And budgeted.
And budgeted.
And budgeted, yes. Those were the wrong subcategory assignments on that.
So, excuse me, so I was looking at the underway projects, and they totaled $6,112,227. So that's not really the case, right? Those aren't all underway and approved.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so it's just all the way down pretty much that first page is typo.
So the first one for $1,095,000, that one is, we are pending DEQ approval on that, and plan to go forward with a bid award, which will come back to you when that's ready. And so that one, I would say, is underway, as is the last one, two, three, four, five projects. So the Cutler Sidewalk Section, the Planning Comp Plan, which we participated with planning to do the Planning Comp Plan work. Actually, Eagles Parking Lot, so that one is budgeted, but it is not underway. So I apologize, but I can give more information on exactly where these projects are in the process. The District Sign is also budgeted, but not underway. The Glass Foundry, the $12,000, is budgeted, but we have not initiated any work on that.
Allison?
Yes.
What are you planning to do at the Glass Foundry?
That money was allocated to make some improvements. There are some exterior improvements. The siding is failing at the back of the building. And because that's a publicly-used parking lot, and in pretty highly-visible tourist area, we need to make improvements to that building, so that we don't end up with a heftier investment that's needed later, because it's not really penetrating water very well. So we had that money to go towards repairing that building there.
Madam Chair.
Chester Norikas.
On page, on my page two, Schooner Point Bay Access, three-quarters of the way down the page.
Yes.
This would provide public bay access. Third sentence, there is no public access to the Seletz Bay. Is there not access at Moes between the north side of the bridge and Cutler Pump Station?
So from the north side of the bridge, from the Seletz Bay Park, which is where the staging is, so that would be public access there. But all the way from that point, across the bridge, down to the Cutler Pump Station, where there's a pedestrian access, there's no public bay access. There's only private property along the bay.
What about Moes, Allison?
Moes, I considered Moes, yeah, there'd be access at the pier, and I considered that north of.
And at the end of the.
51st Street.
51st Street.
Yes. So in Taft, there's quite a bit of access, but going down into Cutler City, not as much.
On page three, second item down on the hard copy, Highway 101, South 35th, High School Drive sidewalks. And then the description says we're realigning Jetty Avenue.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so that description's not correct. That should be to fill a sidewalk gap through that section from basically the south part of where the ODOT improvements were made, up to High School Drive.
And going down on the same page, three, Southwest 30, Second Street Parking Lot Modifications. This is our new parking lot, is it not?
Our new parking lot is at 35th, and so this would be our old parking lot, which is basically behind the Nelscott Mercantile Building and right across from the Eagles.
Okay.
And it is an older project that was identified as needing some ADA improvements, I think primarily because of slope.
All right. Thank you.
Dick Anderson, if you have comments?
I guess I'm leaning towards Mr. Ryan's comment of, you know, just push the list forward, because it's just pushing paper. But I think what we need at some point is that list, a cleaned list of the actual projects that are going on, and the amount of money, I guess, needed to, for those projects. Because we talk about this mixed bonding of roughly $3 million, but we know there's still some allocated of the old bond towards these projects. So I guess what, looking for me, I was not able to distinguish whether I needed part of that $3 million to go against the existing projects. So maybe that short sheet of saying, you know, projects that are really alive and well and funded, and what year or what bond issue they'll be taking funds from. So that, I'm assuming the next step we'll have is picking from this list the project going forward, whether it's complete sidewalks or undergrounding, de-way side. And all the rest are just fluff, but to take a look at it.
Yeah, absolutely. The budget will dictate what decisions are possible, because we can't build everything.
Right.
At this point, what we envisioned really was trying to get some clarity on if there were projects you really were not interested in, so that we could create a pretty concise list for the bond council to go forward with the bond. And if we know what types of projects you want to do, and it sounds like, you know, you both are interested in kind of an assortment of public projects and also partnership projects, and, you know, we'll hear what the others say as well, but that that would then help us figure out what type of bond we need to proceed with. And then that's when we would come back to you with a plan for what the next steps are. So it's kind of cart and horse, but at this point, we really just wanted to get feedback on what types of projects you're all interested in.
Well, and then I guess, I guess it really raises the question, as Mr. Ryan brought up, is there any issue with moving the whole list forward? Does it cost us more money for underwriters, for example, on the bond, because this list is so long? Or does it just simply get attached to the prospectus, and so it's a printing cost?
Yeah. So it's my understanding that the bond process generalizes the types of projects. So it might say waterline improvements, or, but then they have these other supplemental documents that back up what decisions are made. So you're right, it's not in this form that it goes through that process, but it helps us know the types of projects that you're wanting to do. So I don't know if you remember, but the last bond that we did was all capital projects, and it was focused on the north end improvement. So we did pump station upgrades, we did force main extensions, and mostly public works infrastructure. And so that was a certain type of bond. When you want to do things other than public or capital projects, and you want to involve private sector or leveraging the money in a different way, then it just means we do a different type of bond. So that's kind of the level that we're inquiring about at this point.
Madam Chair, I guess, given there's only $3 million, and I mean, this is the tail end, I can see the desire to whittle this down to two pages would be helpful, or maybe three. And if that's what your staff would be recommending or stuff, then, you know, maybe that's what we could do is, you know, to me, it'd be easier to, I don't worry about the projects that I don't like, because I'll never vote for them, so I don't care if they're on there or not. It's the ones that I want that I'd want to move forward. And as I stated, you know, for me, undergrounding is going to take up the major part of the $3 million and try to backfill some sidewalks, and we're done.
Actually, we're not trying to whittle down, or we're not recommending that you whittle this down. This is a step in the process that we have to make in the process of ultimately issuing a bond on this. So if you want to leave it as is, there's no issue associated with that. So our recommendation isn't to leave it in or to take it out. It's really, if there are projects in here you actually do not want to see happen, pull those out. But if you don't feel strongly on those, leave them in.
Madam Chair.
So, so Mr. Chandler, if, how do we go about if we find a project that we love, but it's not on that list?
Okay. Allison's going to correct me if I'm wrong on this, okay? Now would actually be a time to add those on. There are some broad categories that were included in the 1988 Plan, that if it fits within those broad categories, then we would be able to add it. If it does not fit in with those broad categories, then we would not be able to. Am I correct in that statement?
So if it doesn't fit in those categories? Sorry, you lost me.
So we should have all the 1988 Plan projects on this list, but some of them are broad, like the undergrounding, for example. So I'm happy to take any projects that you're interested in and find out if I've missed something in the 88 Plan. Or if it's something, you know, like the economic development category, for example, which is on one of the later pages, is fairly broad. So, you know, you may fit into one of those broader categories.
Let me give you an example. If you go to page 10, you'll notice that a project name, which was included in the 1988 Plan, is Economic Development Assistance. And it states, "Agency may partner in development of workforce housing." I'll give specifics of how you partner or what you do. It's just as simply, it's associated with workforce housing. So if there is a project specifically associated with that that is part of the district, and it fits into that category, then you would be okay without having to specifically identify that project. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, having said that, I have a problem with 51st Street. It's underutilized, and not, it kind of got about 90% there, and that's where it stopped. And also, we have that wonderful Hershey's property that remains. I don't know how to work that in. It seems like I'm always a year too late. So if a person at least wanted to work that in, to have it considered at some later date, is there a process that I'm just, it's just gone over my head for that? And I don't even know what specifically that I would ask, except that it's underutilized, I think, in my opinion.
Madam Chair. I believe that the development of the Hershey property, for one, is in the original Taft Plan. Also, the development of the, what is now kind of a motel and trailer park area. There were some, in the original plan, there is a development concept. So I think, my recollection of the plan for Taft is that, yes, there is. So, you know, it's up to the council and developers to figure out what they want to do there and do it. There was some talk, of course, of the weather station, or Weather Museum, or Tsunami.
Tsunami, yeah.
You know, whatever, which all just kind of fell through. There were some plans for a motel up the hillside with the convention, the small convention center. That kind of went by the wayside. So I think it's non-specific enough in the plan, the original plan, that things can be done there without it. And part of that is under some of these other categories. When we originally looked at the urban renewal plan, we were being about as broad as we could, so that we could develop things, I mean, you know, as money and whatever came along. For instance, Mr., I think it was Norikas, mentioned the Schooner Point. You know, at one point, there was a plan drawn for a walk down and kind of a pier out with a, kind of a representation of a schooner, the way it was shaped, and some other things. And, you know, we were all pretty excited about it, and the Army Corps of Engineers, or whoever, said, "Absolutely not. You cannot do that." So that kind of just went, you know. So, I mean, there are some things like that that were in the, the original urban renewal plan that are pretty far-reaching. And that's why I'm kind of interested in just keeping it as it is. It gives us that flexibility to do some of the things that we want to do. Like, we have spent so much money on, urban renewal money, on infrastructure. I think people would like to see us spend some money on some of the other things that they can actually see. They can't see the sewer. They can't see the pump station, they see them, but they don't know, you know, how it works and all of that. They don't see the, they see the results of the undergrounding, but they don't understand the expense underneath. So some of the other less expensive things, like sidewalks, completing sidewalks through town, everybody can see that, and everybody can use that. And that is one of those things that would be very visual. Street lighting, changing the street lighting slightly with the help of specific power, so that it's not so lame and ugly, you know. There's a whole bunch of things, you know, and that's why we have an arts commission, too, is so that we can beautify. too, is so that we can beautify. One of the things that we were faced with when I first came to town, and you were in town at that time, was that they were referring to us as the seven ugliest miles in the state.
Miserable miles.
Miserable miles, yeah. And it was pretty ugly. It still is not real pretty. But, you know, we are attempting to improve it. And I've noticed that where we have made urban renewal improvements above ground, people are working slowly but surely. They're changing their facades. They're changing some of the things that they're doing and making it a little bit more beautiful. It's going to take time. It's not an instant fix, unfortunately.
To build on that, Wes.
Sure.
I think that, I agree with you in that people want to see change up top. And we have, I brought this up before, we seem to have a difference. Urban renewal has a different definition of blight than the average guy that's walking down the street. And what I hear and what I see and feel is that if during our urban renewal program, if we can actually tackle some of that blight, it will spread, just as a, you know, a gang member sign will spread throughout a neighborhood if it gets going the other way. And I don't know about you folks, but I, I'm seeing changes, you know. We are getting, we are getting better. So I don't know how to incorporate that into your plan. You know, to me, it would be nice even to be able to buy a crappy piece of property, rehabilitate it, and put it back on the market. That would be nice. Anyway, I'll be quiet.
So just, oh.
Madam Chair, one thing you could do on this, if you'd like to delay action until your next meeting, we can make sure that this project or any other types of projects that you mentioned tonight, we can go back, make sure that they can fit into a category and bring it back to you so that you know exactly what action you would be taking.
And if I may, at the same time, what Mr. Anderson asked, if we could see what of the money projects is already allocated from past bonds, so what we're looking at as a money against a future bond, that would be very helpful, too. I'm sorry, I interrupted.
And so about your question about property development at the old Hershey property, if you look on page, I think it's page three, near the bottom, there should be a project name called Property Development. And that does talk about developing the four urban renewal properties that we own. So that would be what you would be looking for with that project. And then Mr. Chandler mentioned the 1988 Plan projects about, the last one listed about partnering with a developer for workforce housing. And if you look on page, I believe it's either three or four, at the top of four or the bottom of three, there should be a project name Affordable Workforce Housing. And that one is also listed because it is a project that we had discussed.
That's top of page, our page four.
Top of four. Top of four, okay. That's what I have as well. So, and that's, so that's also listed there because we had talked about it in February. So it's reflected twice. I think, was there another project, Kit, that you had mentioned?
What?
Besides 51st Street?
I just casually said that I thought it would be nice if we had some type of reserve, that we can actually go out and buy blighted properties.
Oh, property acquisition.
And rehabilitate them and bring them back on the market.
So property acquisition is also listed, should be towards the bottom of page four. And that was also discussed at the February meeting. And it doesn't call out any properties, it's just there as a topic.
Anyone else? I had a couple of questions on page eight. The paving stone crosswalks, which I have seen in other towns and they really bring your eyes aware to the possibility there may be pedestrians crossing the street. It says, "Not pursuing due to cost of maintenance." Aren't there other options that wouldn't need to be maintained?
Yeah, so, you know, in reality, everything needs maintenance at some point in time. Different materials are of different durability, but usually when they're more durable, they're higher upfront cost. In this case, it's kind of challenging because, you know, there are some locations where we did this treatment that were deeper into the village of Taft, and those lasted longer. But the ones that were done on Highway 101, really, they, you know, because of a lot of traffic, they show the tire marks pretty considerably and quickly. So it's not, it's not as favorable for the maintenance schedule that we will leave Public Works with when we are done with our projects.
I think there's some on Northwest 15.
Yes, and that was.
Held up real well.
Yeah, that one has held up better. So it's also, I think, a white color, so it doesn't show as much wear with the sand and lower traffic because we put the speed table in. I think traffic doesn't go as fast. It's also fairly straight, so it's not scrubbing sideways, different sort of street.
And then at the bottom of that page, it's one that says, "Beach access parking slash restrooms. May acquire property and construct parking." But that last sentence doesn't make sense. It says, "Also see project number 15 below."
Ah, okay. Yeah, that doesn't apply. That came straight out of the 88 Plan.
Okay.
So I'll delete that for your clean copy that I'll get to you.
I would like to keep our options open. I would like to have the ability to work with both public projects and public partnership projects. So that's where my opinion is on that matter. Okay? Anyone else?
I did have one more comment. And you brought it up about the stamped or cobblestone. At the time that we were thinking of doing this, we originally thought of the cobblestones and we figured, we found out that in our environment, they would not work.
Oh, okay.
So then we looked at the, of concrete intersections, because they were having a lot of success with those in many communities, eastern Washington, you know, so. And we, again, discovered that, number one, our soil was not conducive to that. Number two, the amount of truck traffic we were getting, the volume, was just not conducive to it. So then we went to the stamped and painted. And as you rightly pointed out, you know, in some areas, it works fine. Most areas where there's heavy traffic volume, especially trucks, it just doesn't work. And it's, and then it starts looking awful, you know, so. But it was a big item of discussion at the time because we were trying to find ways to make improvements on that street, on Highway 101, and that, that's fine. Just a little history. Do we need a motion on this?
If you're ready to move forward, yes.
Well, I would move that we keep this entire list intact and that Allison come back to us with the instructions that we have given her regarding the finance. Gosh, now I, I hope you wrote it down because I forgot. But those instructions. Anyway, that's my motion. You want me to clean that up?
I have no idea what you said, Wes.
I would move, yeah, okay. I would move that we keep this list intact and have Allison bring us back the changes that we suggested.
I'm happy to second it if no one else will.
We have a motion and a second to have this entire list cleaned up and brought back to us. All those in favor? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none, motion passes.
Madam Chair, this just moves for the bond, the next step in the bond issue? Is that right? This is just another step? Okay.
Any other agency member comments? All right, meeting's adjourned.
Microphones are off.